Good evening, everyone, and welcome to what day is today? The July 21st meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council. If you're able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we enter a new dimension in time and space, would our clerk please call the role of council?
Councilmember Dish?
Here.
Councilmember Harrison, absent. Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Malik, absent. Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Gazza Edwin?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Iyer?
Here.
Councilmember Ackman?
Here.
Councilmember Briggs, absent. Councilmember Cornell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
May the motion please to approve the agenda move by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Ackman. Discussion of the agenda. All favor? All opposed? The agenda is approved. We have communications today from our city administrator.
No, Mayor.
We do have one introduction today from our indomitable Executive Director of the Downtown Development Authority, Maura Thompson. Ms. Thompson, you have the con.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I just have two brief updates for you tonight, no slides. So I first wanted to give you an update on the timeline of the DDA development plan. So the timeline continues to evolve. However, where we stand right now, the earliest we would have the plan to council for consideration would be January. So with that timeline in mind, or with that date in mind, council's first action would be in mid-September, when the public hearing and the first reading of the ordinance change would be set. There is then a minimum of a 20-day period between the notice of that public hearing and when that public hearing can take place. So that would bring us potentially to your October 20th council meeting. We then have a 60-day period, a minimum of 60 days, between that public hearing and when council can actually vote on the plan, and that would bring us to your first meeting in January. So there are a lot of moving parts. Things could change, but from where we stand today, that is what we are looking at. For members of the public, the development plan does have a page on the city's public engagement platform, Engage. All of the materials that have been presented to the DDA Board and to this council live on that page. If there are members of council or members of the public who would like to learn more about the plan, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to meet with anybody who has interest in discussing the plan or has questions. My only other update is to let you all know that the DDA has moved to the Carytown Market and Shops. So our office is now located in the Lewick Building. We are on the second floor above Found. All of our public meetings are now taking place here at City Hall. So the DDA Board actually now meets in council chambers the first Wednesday of the month from noon to 2:00. Our DDA Board work sessions take place in the basement conference room here at City Hall. All of our meetings are posted on the DDA's website, as well as on Legistar. So with that, if you find yourself down in Carytown, I hope you'll stop in our office, say hello, and check out our new space. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now come to Public Comment Reserve Time. Public Comment Reserve Time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at Public Comment Reserve Time, one needs to have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Because we have an excess of 30 persons signed up today, speakers in this meeting will have two minutes in which to speak. Two minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. That was, that is part of our council rules. The clerk has made every effort to communicate this to persons who have signed up. Folks will have two minutes in which to speak. We will run through, without doubt, the first 23 speakers prior to the start of the, well, the business meeting has started, prior to the discussion of council. If the first 23 speakers are completed prior to 45 minutes, then we will continue on with the queue, 24, 25, 26, et cetera. In the event we are unable to hear you during this first public comment period, there will be Public Comment Overflow Time, which will occur after the set of votes scheduled for this meeting. In any event, whether you are in-house or whether you are online, please pay close attention to the, to your time under these, under these novel circumstances. The time clock will notify you when you have 30 seconds remaining, or the clerk will notify you when you have 30 seconds remaining, and when your time is expired. In each case, when your time is expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Our first speaker today is Adam Goodman.
Good evening. Tonight, I want to quickly tell you a tale of two cities, Minneapolis, Minnesota, and Portland, Oregon. Many folks know Minneapolis was the first major city in the U.S. to legalize multi-unit homes in what had previously been reserved for exclusively single-unit homes. But after that, very few of these multiplexes actually got built. The reasons are no mystery. Minneapolis enacted a hard cap of three units, and they also required that multi-unit structures fit into exactly the same building envelope as three, as single-unit homes. Thanks to these and other restrictions, it was not feasible to build these multi-unit buildings. Minneapolis legalized housing in theory, but not in practice. Only a couple of years later, Portland also legalized multi-unit homes throughout the city, but they did it differently. Portland legalized four plexes by right and six plexes if half the units were affordable. They also allowed incrementally more floor area as the unit count increases, so these plexes can be a bit larger than single-family homes, though still within reason for neighborhood context. And in Portland, it's working. According to a recent report from the city, they're issuing twice as many permits for these middle housing homes as they are for single-unit homes. They also have great data showing these new home types are having a very positive effect on affordability in Portland's neighborhoods. So tonight, I'm here to ask you to commit to a vision of residential infill in our city, including in R1 and R2 neighborhoods, that legalizes housing in practice, not just in theory. However, the DC3 tonight would do the opposite. It would be a big step towards Minneapolis's failed approach. The most immediate reasoning I'm asking you to vote no is because it commits to a three, hard, three-unit cap, just like Minneapolis. But other details will be just as important in the coming weeks and months, so I'm also urging you to be vigilant on those, so we don't foreclose on a future for our city where everyone has the opportunity to live in a neighborhood of their choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrea Barr.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to address the city council. My name is Andrea Barr. I live at 401 South Ravina Boulevard, up on the west side. We have many multifamily dwellings in our neighborhood, and I fully support increasing the supply of affordable and quality housing in Ann Arbor. However, I see issues that I do not believe have been addressed sufficiently. I have four points regarding the comprehensive land use plan. Number one, and I'll frame these in questions, I know you're not going to answer them for me tonight. Number one, have and/or will street studies be completed as part of defining transition zones? Parking requirements for three-to-four-story, multi-unit buildings, commercial, et cetera, that parking is ambiguous in the plan, the city obviously no longer requires parking minimums. And the argument that banks will not fund developments without parking is only a partial response. In several neighborhoods, including the one I live in, with many duplexes and minimal driveways, again, which I'm very happy with, there is already a heavy and yet understandable reliance on street parking. And I'm wondering the extent to which the leaders have had street studies done, or just gone and taken a look on an average day? Because a new four-story building with, that might have up to eight units, that could be as many as 16 additional cars. I agree with that vision for less, for fewer cars, but there is the reality. The second point is to infrastructure. And here, I will stand and raise questions on the point of costing. And is the infrastructure going to be costed after the land use plan is developed? Because frankly, I feel like that is a whole part that's being missed right now, is how will the water, sanitation, et cetera, be addressed? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chen Liu.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. I'm here to speak as a student against DC3. I, I believe that the, this, this resolution arrived as a response to the concerns, the surging concerns that we heard in the past month. But as I checked the Ann Arbor Neighborhood Network website, I noted their intention is to try to include more voices, including students, low-income renters, in the participation process. But I think it's disingenuous that when you have this language that limit bedroom, bedroom per unit, limit unit density in the master plan, I think you're compromising those values to really, to really make the city more inclusive to the students. And I also want to, wanted to address some of the regionals I heard in the past months, including citing, for example, Grand Rapids process as a reason we should pause on the current comprehensive planning process. It's indeed that Grand Rapids has a more resident-focused approach in their master planning, but we also need to notice that this is a city that has operated without single-family zoning for almost 20 years, and its, in its master planning process also didn't drag its feet, even with a city that has a higher density, has a higher density than us. So as a student, I very hope that you reconsider the language as it currently stands in DC3. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 835. Irma Mayer, do you have a comment? Press star six on mute in phone. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. I'm Irma Mayer, Ward 3. The resolution you are considering this evening that recommends additional edits on the draft land use plan do little to improve upon what your plan has been from the start. A top-down, developer-friendly plan designed to transform Ann Arbor without the full knowledge or consent of its city residents. This resolution is just political cover. Among its minor recommendations, the resolution vaguely suggests possible new zoning districts, but only after approving the plan that will justify future zoning decisions. It vaguely suggests possible size limits on multiplexes. Supporters of speculative development suggest we can get beautiful, new, affordable apartment buildings, but we're not fooled. What Ann Arbor is getting are overpriced, cheaply-built, lot-choking boxes, not great architecture, and multimillion-dollar condos. Your plan lacks credible data on Ann Arbor's current conditions and has wildly implausible and unsubstantiated claims for future growth. It ignores massive infrastructure costs and assumes without evidence that commuters will flock to an overcrowded, costly city. Your plan has no plan to protect our tree canopy, environment, or historic districts, all core to Ann Arbor's livability and identity. Most critically, the plan offers no real solutions for housing affordability and ignores how it invites predatory investors to displace vulnerable communities for profit.
30 seconds.
This resolution is political deflection, meant to appease, not fix. It's not serious. It's time to pause the plan, start over, and for elected officials to answer not to developers and their allies, but to residents who make Ann Arbor the extraordinary city it is and will become. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lynn Song.
Good evening, council. Lynn Song, former colleague with an ongoing interest in our housing policy as a constituent and whose primary and only residence is a home zone, single-family home, on a quarter-acre lot, 2,300 square feet, with a half-pipe in her backyard. I am not a residential developer, but a homeowner who chose my neighborhood because it met the needs of my then-young family, close to the elementary school, hospital, and work. More importantly, it's a racially and socio-economically diverse neighborhood, on three blocks from Green Baxter Court, with low-income housing supported by community action networks, three blocks from Green Bay Apartments, where additional families with and without housing vouchers live, five blocks from Glacier Hill Senior Living, and bounded by condos and townhomes to the north and east of my home. Councilmember Watson knows this because we are neighbors within a block of each other. Would we benefit from a duplex, triplex, or quad in our neighborhood? I would hope so, given that the majority of our teachers do not live within or close to our neighborhood, commuting from across town, if not farther out. Is there fear that an apartment with unlimited heights will be built within the neighborhood? Yes, because this big lie has been told for years in campaigns and by former elected leaders. My ask of you is that as you finalize a comprehensive land use plan, is to refute this lie alongside your housing partners such as Avalon Housing, Wasna Housing Alliance, and the Housing Commission, and your state and county representatives. This vision to 2050, when many of us won't even be alive, is meant to advance progress for more than once a generation. It took 12 years for Veridian to be financed, built, and welcomed residents. That burden of additional, of adding additional units on public parcels because residents cannot accept more neighbors absolutely impacts housing agencies' timeline and waitlist. Negotiating forums means negotiating away units, means negotiating away people. And I know you understand this unjust math, and I appreciate your work so that it quells fears, but I ask that you build enthusiasm, joy, and positivity for more equitable diversity.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Garav Kolkani.
Hello, council. My name is Garav, and I'm speaking in opposition of DC3. As a Ward 5 resident, I first want to say thank you to Councilmember Cornell for her leadership on this issue. I understand that you want to give constituents stronger assurances about the limits of what can change, but more specificity does not require this level of restriction. Zoning is a value judgment. What types of houses belong in neighborhoods and which ones don't? And by extension, who belongs in neighborhoods and who doesn't? Your resolution suggests that there are neighborhoods where a 3,000-square-foot, single-family home belongs, but a six, six-plex with the same building envelope does not. That doesn't make sense. The resolution suggests that there are neighborhoods where none of these apartments nor their residents belong. These represent real homes in residential neighborhoods that are within a three-story limit and support wider income ranges. I've heard, I've also heard the argument that a modest increases in R1 and R2 are still a win, and that most of our housing will come from transition and hub districts. But we don't believe that living in neighborhoods like Burns Park or Water Hill should be reserved for wealthy Ann Arborites. Residents of all income levels deserve to live in residential neighborhoods that are close to downtown and near parks and schools. I'm tired of hearing, "We need more housing, just not in my backyard." The homes you see here are a path to affordability in the neighborhoods that people want to live in. R1 and R2 zones cover 67% of our developable land. This resolution effectively bans these units from 2/3 of our available space and reserves that space just for those who can afford it. Please do not restrict most of the city to three-unit maximums. Form-based restrictions already ensure buildings with more units will fit in. If you've, if you have worried constituents, show them pictures of the apartments they walk by every day and don't even realize they're six plexes till they look at the mail slots. We can share these examples with you to help out. So many people want to, want the precious commodity that we have, let's allow more neighbors' access to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Skirbo.
Mark Skirbo, 2017 Fair Street. I ask you to vote no on DC3, but I want to start by thanking you. You've heard community feedback, and you've taken out some of the most egregious language from this memo. I'm also thankful to council members who have engaged in productive discussion about the details and added language to ensure we can reduce development barriers to missing middle housing. Finally, I want to thank Councilmember Dish, who has consistently corrected misinformation at Planning Commission meeting and gets into the academic literature to back claims. With that said, this resolution is fundamentally misplaced for trying to get into the details of zoning without the experience and the deep discussion from Planning Commission, let alone other critical housing partners such as Avalon. Trying to preemptively apply arbitrary unit count limits to a land use category, which represents the majority of our developable land in the city, can only end an inconsistent application of the rule and political disaster. I'm glad you provided specific form-based definitions of neighborhood context instead of leaving it as the dog whistle replacement that it is, but we also don't have, and shouldn't have, a definition of a neighborhood. Three single-family homes down from mine are a bunch of three-story, eight-plus-unit apartments. Should my neighborhood be able to support a quadplex or townhomes, given that the street has higher density already? I think so, but in creating this memo, you're introducing years of bitter zoning battles to come. You've just seen lots of examples of smaller housing options throughout the city, and we have plenty of 4,000-plus-square-foot, single-family homes. Why are the former to be meticulously doled out and the latter allowed by right when we're in the middle of a devastating housing crisis? Please lead by example and communicating a positive vision for the future to your constituents. I'd love to see a tour of middle housing options in your wards featured on your respective newsletters and on social media. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jerka Haldis.
Good evening, council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jerka Haldish, and I happen to be a resident and owner of a detached monoplex home in the first ward. I won't rehash the excellent points made by the previous few speakers, but I would like to suggest that if you are going to pass DC3, you should add an amendment to direct the Planning Commission to change the tagline of the comp plan from A2 for all to A2 for me, but not for you. That would at least be an honest reflection of the substance of this resolution. We've all seen the vitriol in public comment and on social media, a small but loud group spewing lies and misinformation, grotesque conspiracy theories, routinely cheering on traffic violence, and constantly dehumanizing people who don't live in detached, monoplex housing. As we have seen over and over again, this type of engagement is not in good faith, and I'm extremely disappointed that anyone would seek to pander to these types of deplorable sentiments instead of condemning them in the strongest possible terms. We elected you to fix the artificial housing shortage that is choking the vitality of this city, and we will not wait patiently for another 10 or 20 years for half-hearted incremental measures. The time to undo the mistakes of the past is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anne Arbaugh.
Anne Arbaugh, 1915 Austin Avenue. Last Friday, we noticed that there was water bubbling up on our street and at the end of our driveway. We called the city to report it. They finally arrived this morning and cut into the street the size of a small swimming pool. The workers, the workers said it was a water main break. I asked them, "Does this happen a lot?" He said, "All the time. They're, they're old pipes. They are constantly leaking and busting. Just a typical Monday," he said. There is now a 6-by-10 cut-in, cutout right in front of our driveway filled with coal patch, but ironically, this is the best-looking portion on our whole street. The road is crumbling, there are large potholes and large chunks of asphalt lining in the road and in the crosswalk. I've been watching the comprehensive plan process for months, and infrastructure is a big part of the conversation. Why is the infrastructure analysis and report not in the plan? I attended a meeting last month where the mayor said that updates to our infrastructure would be paid by the developers and the ratepayers, not the taxpayers. Last week, Councilman, Councilmember Dish stated that the, that the ratepayers would not pay for the infrastructure updates. Which one is it? And what is the difference between a ratepayer and a taxpayer? I emailed Councilmember Dish asking what the discrepancy was, and she said she would have the city attorney respond. That was last Tuesday. I emailed Councilmember Dish this morning for an update, and she still has not received anything from the city attorney. It seems like an easy answer, question to answer. While I appreciate the fact that the council is now listening to the citizens' concerns, I'm not sure how many, how any part of your resolution is enforceable when it comes to zoning changes that will occur when the plan is adopted. Instead of making recommendations to the Planning Commission, demand that the plan incorporates all the portions of the plan that is missing, like infrastructure, studies. We deserve a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adam McHugh.
Caller with the phone number ending, caller with the phone number ending in 404. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, my name is Adam McHugh. I live in Ward 5, and I wanted to speak today in my opposition to the resolution regarding the comprehensive land use plan being introduced. This resolution screams of NIMBY undertones, and the housing crisis is perpetuated by policy like these, providing limits to the number of other units for building, consideration of, of neighborhood context, and creating further zoning districts that subdivide housing. We should not water down the comprehensive land use plan and should not delay its approval. We do not need more consultation, we need more action. I wasn't even living in Ann Arbor at the time that I heard about and attended the first workshops to start developing the plan, and those are the exact things that made me want to move to Ann Arbor. Most of Europe and much of Asia is full of examples of these housing and zoning policies working. Putting limitations in the plan is toxic to the goals of the plan and the goals of everyone in Ann Arbor who wants more and better housing, less greenhouse gases, and less cars on the road. Ann Arbor has a land area of 29 square miles and houses about 120,000 residents, whereas Paris is 41 square miles and houses 2.1 million residents. I say this not to say that we should become Paris, but to illustrate how inefficient our land use currently is and will continue to be if resolutions like this continue to affect Ann Arbor's housing future. This feels very much like a reflection of the homeowner, homeowner classes will on the rest of Ann Arbor residents and would-be residents.
30 seconds.
As the upper classes are concerned with, with, as upper classes are concerned with the character of the neighborhood, everyone else is worried about where they were going to live, how much rent they can afford, and how long they commute. Healthy cities are those that grow and, and provide plentiful new housing necessary for that growth. Please vote against this resolution and continue Ann Arbor on its path to a healthier housing market. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jonathan Levine.
Good evening, Jonathan Levine, 456 Hiddledale. I'm here to urge you to amend DC3 to better align with your stated goals for the comprehensive land use plan, adding new homes in single-family areas and repairing past exclusionary policies. My primary concern is a three-unit cap. While I understand the amendment doesn't explicitly impose this cap citywide, it establishes While I understand the amendment doesn't explicitly impose this cap citywide, it establishes a pernicious principle. By stating that duplexes and triplexes have, quote, "widespread opportunity for development" while larger buildings need to, quote, "fit existing neighborhood contexts," we're essentially setting up a default, where three-unit limit with an implied burden of proof for anything larger. This framework will inevitably pit neighbors, neighborhoods against each other. Residents in areas deemed suitable for small apartment buildings will rightfully be resent being singled out for denser development. The path of least resistance will be to apply the three-unit cap everywhere, defeating our housing goals. We have real-world evidence that this approach doesn't work. As Adam spoke about earlier, Minneapolis eliminated single-family zoning in 2016, but failed to generate new homes in their former single-family zone. We can't repeat that exercise while remaining, remaining true to the goals that we've set for ourselves. What's more, the three-unit cap has perverse incentives. When developers are limited to three units, to the extent that they develop housing at all, they're, they, they'll build fewer, larger units. We have no interest in fewer, larger units if our interest is in affordability, and certainly not in encouraging a particular building form of five and six bedrooms per, per kitchen and units that are marketed to students. I don't think we have any interest in incentivizing these kinds of developments. I think that we're spending a lot and getting very little out of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Annika Moran.
Call her with the phone number ending in 079. Press star six to unmute your phone. Call her ending in 079. Annika Moran, go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, that's, my phone number is 8999. Hi, I'm Annika Moran, and I would like to tell you about my experience with Ann Arbor. In traveling for my job in nature conservation, people often ask me where I'm from, and when I answer that I was born and raised in Ann Arbor, the reaction is sometimes a little, and to be honest, I often feel a little embarrassed. The truth is, I love Ann Arbor and I love living here, but then why do I feel embarrassed about that? Among my peers, Ann Arbor has a reputation as a full progressive city that claims to be for diversity and racial equality, but in reality does very little to rectify its deep history of exclusion. And in the present day, that makes the city unaffordable, sterile, and above all, unapproachable to people who are not lucky enough to have the money necessary to live here. That extends for me. My parents were among those lucky few, and I'm able to remain in the area for the time being by living with them. But given that I'm a young person in a not very lucrative career, continuing to live in Ann Arbor once I find a place of my own just feels financially irresponsible at best. If the council passes Resolution DC 3, then that signals to me that they are fine with that status quo, and that they are fine with the reality that young people like me will move out and at best become commuters that cost the city money in road maintenance and parking instead of finding affordable housing here at home and continuing to volunteer and contribute to the economy within the community, which is what I do when I live here. And as I'm sure everyone knows, we are in the midst of a nationwide housing crisis. The comprehensive plan gives us the opportunity, the opportunity to make Ann Arbor known as a pioneer of how to respond to the needs of people and provide a vibrant mixed-use, affordable future. Passing DC 3, on the other hand, will stem that opportunity and keep most of the city trapped in the past. Let's allow for missing middle housing across the city, meet the needs of people, and make Ann Arbor a place I am truly proud to call home. So reject Resolution DC 3.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rowan Anastasia.
Call her with the phone number ending in 313. Phone number ending in 313, press star six to unmute your phone. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Rowan Anastasia, thank you. My name is Rowan Anastasia, I am a resident of Ward 2. I am here to request the councils to consider pausing the plan. I was made aware of the resolution today, and it sounds like no one is happy about it because the people who want the plan to be paused and don't want to see the continued hyperdevelopment of Ann Arbor that is destroying the unique identity of this place that has been a home to so many people for so long are unhappy about it, and it also sounds like the people who want to see Ann Arbor continue to be developed in the aim of promoting more people here are not happy about it. And I empathize with council because it's really hard to come up with a plan that makes no one happy and everyone mad at you, so I respect that. It's been great that so many people have been willing to come out and, and speak up about this. Clearly, there is a, a urgent need for more time to consider how this community can come together and actually look like a community and work together in order to promote that inclusive future that honestly, it sounds like everybody wants. I think that it's important to conserve.
30 seconds.
Oh, okay, thank you. But please reconsider pausing this plan and the bull rush strategy of development and construction that has burned so many wonderful businesses and has priced out so many residents already and continues to be a threat and excludes the possibility of being more inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, speaker is Eli Agleze.
Hello, council, and thank you for the opportunity to address you all this evening. As a lifelong Washington County resident who's been priced out of the city, I'm here to speak in opposition to DC 3. I appreciate the work that council has done so far in trying to bring our city in a more inclusive direction, but DC 3 undermines that work while ineffectively pandering to a concerted disinformation campaign. Every pause-the-plan sign contains a lie that one's neighborhood is being rezoned. That's not true, but this resolution, which includes language that suggests zoning-style restrictions for the residential category, caters to that dishonest position as if it were legitimate. Additionally, trying to restrict student housing to specific parts of the city is unfair. Residential areas where there's high demand for student housing should add more student housing as that's where it's most desperately needed. The only reason Ann Arbor is such a desirable place is because of our students. They do not deserve to be treated as second-class citizens. I understand that council is concerned about the pause-the-plan backlash, but this is a backlash based in reactionary conspiracism with the desire of implementing policies, the protection of single-family zoning, straight out of Project 2025. It isn't in line with Ann Arbor's values, and especially not with your voters, who chose unanimously pro-housing council members in each of the past three election cycles. This resolution won't end the backlash, the comments made by some others today show that clearly. The backlash will only end once the plan is enacted and the world doesn't end, so delaying the plan only gives them more power. Instead, we should starve the movement of attention. Please reject this resolution.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Leff.
Nancy Leff, if you're on Zoom, please press star nine to raise your hand. Mayor, I don't see this caller online.
Our next speaker is Julie Ritter.
I think the rule, I think the, I don't know if we have a process for deferral, ma'am. Two minutes will be at the end, there'll be two minutes at the end as well. Do you wish to speak now? Our next speaker is Nicholas Hernandez Flores.
Good evening, council. My name is Nicholas Flores, Ward 4. I'm excited to speak in my first city council meeting, but saddened to let you know that at the end of this month, I will no longer be a Ward 4 resident. That is because my wife and I were priced out of the Burns Park neighborhood that we called home during our first three years as Ann Arbor residents. We loved the neighborhood, we loved the short-stroke Argus and Side Biscuit, which we went to way too often. We loved having the campus in downtown, a convenient walk, bike ride, or trip on Route 5 away. We had wonderful neighbors and very often saw the mayor of our city cycling just a block away. That's not something you see in a lot of places. We were the only apartment building in our block and only one of a small number in the neighborhood, so it wasn't a surprise when we were priced out. That's just supply and demand. I wasn't bitter. Instead, I was actually heartened to know that this, that just as this was happening, the city was developing a new comprehensive plan that would make it easier for recently established residents to have the wonderful experience we had for a longer period of time. So you can imagine my disappointment to hear that this plan might be watered down and delayed. While we are debating this housing plan, our federal landscape is becoming frightening. These are not disconnected. We are in this position because bad actors use scarcity to churn fear of outsiders into votes, and I should know, I am an immigrant in the process of getting United States citizenship in addition to being an Ann Arbor resident. When local governments choose scarcity, you play into these bad actors' hands. When local governments let their cities become unaffordable, people leave, and when that happens, the political power we need at the local level is lost. But beyond all that, I believe that you all have a responsibility to the city's residents, existing, recent, and yet-to-be. Delaying these long-needed changes would be failing that responsibility. Please reject this resolution and continue making the city's housing policy match its values. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James Fields.
Hi, I'm James Fields. That's also my dad's name, I actually go by my mental name, Bruce. But I've been thinking about my parents a lot lately because they were both students here in 1970, when I was born. They lived in the rented Upper Story of a house in Lower Town in what is now Beethman. And I, after those few months, left, didn't come back until it was time for my now-wife and I to, to attend grad school, and then we ended up staying. So sometimes it feels like a lot of the discussion around zoning in Ann Arbor is about separating the student residential use from the family residential use, whatever that is. And my family story just reminds me that, that students often come with families of varying sizes, and that it's hard to separate these different types of people into different neighborhoods. It's 50-some years later now, and it's time for my generation to deal with, taking care of, of the older generation, and we've spending, spending a lot of time thinking about where our parents are going to live. And we run into a lot of the same issues. You know, I talk with my friends a lot, and a lot of people are trying to find senior living communities where their parents can live that are still a reasonable daily visit from where they live, or else they're trying to figure out how to modify their house so that their parents can live with them, or trying to figure out how they can find units in the same building. So I'm just here to bring up those different examples as a reminder that we really need to, whenever we have the choice, I think, prioritize flexibility in our zoning rules. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Our next speaker is Wendy Carmen.
Call her with the phone number ending in 019. Sorry, caller ending in 693.
Yes, my name is Wendy Carmen, I live, yes?
Go ahead, we can hear you.
My name is Wendy Carmen, I live at 2340 Georgetown. I've represented the Ann Arbor public on many city committees, the ZBA, the Natural Features Ordinance Committee, the Environmental Commission's Biodiversity Committee, and in '29 on the committee that originally chose the Interface Studios as the comprehensive plan consultant. A glaring mistake in public engagement process for your plan was excluding the general public from the dialogue. Opinions were directly solicited from stakeholders. The general public were not considered stakeholders. No notices were mailed to the general public. Their participation required being in the know. Most residents are still left in the dark. They have not had an opportunity to participate in dialogue with the city about their visions for their city. Beneath the graphics and vague language, your plan appears designed to give staff, council, and Planning Commission maximumly away to do what they want and to let the free market create whatever it wants. Tonight's resolution offers lip service to some of the things you heard from the public since your plan was released, but misleads them rather than accepting what they have told you. Again, you're not listening to the underlying request to pause the plan and make time for actual dialogue with neighborhoods and communities. Critically, your list leaves out the most important changes needed. One example, you are disregarding, discarding our strong natural features master plan in favor of vague, brief language.
30 seconds.
This downgrades the environmental priorities, which should be paramount. Without protecting the city's significant natural features, the city is not sustainable. You have ignored the Environmental Commission's recommendations to safeguard our environment, and this is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Ellen Strowman.
Mayor, I do not, oh, I thought you were on the phone, sorry.
Good evening, council. First, I want to thank you for continuing to be so responsive to resident feedback. In addition to the official public engagement events that began as long as, as long ago as last year, quiet as it's apparently been kept, you've hosted smaller-town halls in your wards and listened to people who reached out to you, including myself. The revisions made to DC 3 before the meeting tonight are another example of how responsive you are being in a trying time. It's not perfect, and there are things I don't love about it still, but I appreciate you attempting to reach compromise, especially during such a tense and highly-charged moment. I also know it's frustrating to many residents that the comprehensive land use plan is meant to be a high-level plan without a ton of specifics, that those details come with the zoning, as many of you have told people many times. I have weirdly become very interested in this type of stuff, but I realize a lot of people aren't, and in the absence of robust messaging from city bad actors. Man. I've been able to spread disinformation that is understandably scaring people. I recently had an exchange with someone on social media who assumed that a quadplex was a four-story building. Showing her a photo of the quad that's unassuming just a couple houses down from me in my neighborhood helped her understand what we were talking about, and she was pleasantly surprised. Going forward, I hope that you all can use the tools at your fingertips, your websites, your newsletters, to reach the vast majority of your constituents. I am grateful to those of you, Dharma in particular, in Ward 4, who have continued to try to reach out to your residents. I know how difficult that is. I also know that Lisa has tried very, very hard as the liaison on planning to do the same. If you use all of the tools at your fingertip, I know that you can explain this complex resident, complex terminology to your residents. Just like you, they are smart and capable people who can understand what form-based zoning is. I know how smart you are, and so are we. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Jevons.
Lisa Jevons on Zoom, go ahead.
Yes, I'm here. Regarding the council resolution, the most important thing I see there is the request for an additional iteration of the draft plan and $84,000 more to do it. I think this is throwing good money after bad. We have already spent over three-quarters of a million dollars on a plan that is missing almost everything a plan should have: correct data sources, a scientific survey of residents, corrected parkland values properly explained, a plan- a plan for attainably-priced housing, a crime report, an infrastructure assessment and funding plan for growth, a city services plan for future fire and police to serve more residents, our own natural features plan, and a land-use map with enough flexibility to make sense in every area of our city. After two years of ignoring all but a small percentage of residents, the city council is now trying to backfill the plan with statements designed to pacify them. I find this to be a transparent political move that will likely be ignored by the Planning Commission anyway due to its radically different approach and belief system. Spending another $84,000 on an incomplete and inadequate plan that nobody agrees on anyway is a waste of money. We should be demanding what we already paid for, not paying more. It's no surprise that the timeline is backed up due to the extended public commentary from people who are still discovering that the plan even exists. Neighborhood input should have been gathered at the beginning, not shoehorned in at the end. The whole process has been done wrong, and another $84,000 is not going to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Luke Hyde.
Caller with the phone number ending in 079. Luke Hyde, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, hi, my name is Luke Hyde, and I want to thank the sponsors of DC-3, and I'm very enthusiastic about it. When I first moved to Ann Arbor, I wanted to buy a townhome that didn't exist in downtown. And part of the generation's been hard to buy homes. I think we need to add more density and grow as a city. I also think upon reading the plan that there are some clear weaknesses and problems in this plan. I think this proposal, DC-3, addresses many of these clear weaknesses. First, students are a major source of growth in the city and yet are barely mentioned in planning. We need a plan that grows student houses, housing, and increases higher-quality and lower-cost options for students. At the same time, we have to recognize that market pressures are different in different parts of the town. We need to plan accordingly. While this plan has tried to address former injustices by eliminating single-family housing, I'm worried the plan currently misses the new major issue coming up: that private equity in the top 1% are buying up real estate rapidly in Ann Arbor and nationwide. I don't want Ann Arbor and near-campus and downtown to become a place where you can only write in a town of stunts with Airbnbs. I live on a street that is already feeling the changes the plan would make citywide, and it's changing our street rapidly from one that's consistent with the plan with a diversity of housing, including small apartments, duplexes and detached homes with a mix of permanent residents and shorter-term rentals, to a street that will be dominated by dense and cheap student housing that is not dense enough to actually help address student needs, but that will cause an accident of permanent residents and decreases in available units for permanent residents and for anyone that's not an undergraduate. I think it's also important to recognize that what happens near-campus will affect everyone.
Thirty seconds.
As permanent residents are driven out of near-campus neighborhoods, it will exert new market pressures in neighborhoods further out and decrease everyone's ability to walk to campus and downtown. I'm grateful for this proposal. It reflects really thoughtful consideration of residents' experiences and concerns and doesn't see this issue as a density or not, but rather a way to grow thoughtfully. Please don't let this proposal and the plan in general be reduced to simplistic ideas of growth or not if those are the extremes want to define this as an issue. Most of us want growth, but we want to be thoughtful about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Salome Vihojan.
Good evening, Council. Salome Vihojan, 512 Second Street. I'm speaking tonight in opposition to the proposed resolution. I want to share my perspective as the owner of a single-family home near campus and as a mother of a young child. Young families are not always represented in these processes because, well, life with young kids is hectic and meetings like this take place at bedtime. But arguments against density often claim to be about protecting our kids. In a recent M-Live article, a resident of the Old Fourth Ward, quote, "ask commissioners to think about how parents with children would feel about having a house next door replaced with a multi-unit building." "How would they feel about 12 new strangers living next door?" he said. He expressed concern that this would push families out and further lower school enrollment. I mean no respect to this neighbor. He's entitled to his views. But, well, I am the mother of a young child. And how do I feel about 12 new strangers living next door? I feel great about it. That's 12 opportunities for new friends, kids close enough that I don't have to get into my car for a playdate. That's grad students who can earn extra cash babysitting for us. And it's new young couples who can walk over for game night or a drink. At the very least, it's 12 new neighbors who don't have to drive into work anymore, who I can bump into at a coffee shop or a restaurant that our denser neighborhood can support and keep in business. When I think of threats to my child, apartment dwellers rank low on the list compared to spending life in and around cars and other problems that come from low-density culture like social isolation and climate change. Our schools are facing declining enrollment because Ann Arbor's population is aging. Young couples and families are priced and pushed out of the city. I get that to many of my neighbors, especially longtime residents, change is scary. But living things are supposed to grow. Ann Arbor is lucky. Young people and young families want to live here. We want to keep these neighborhoods vibrant and alive and growing, but you need to let us. That's why I'm asking the council to reject the resolution and move forward on the Comprehensive Plan for more housing in Ann Arbor. We need it badly, and the future is waiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Having reached the 23rd speaker and exceeded 45 minutes, the balance of public speakers who have signed up, 24 through 37, will be heard at public comment overflow. Are there communications today from council? Councilmember Medina.
Thank you, Mayor. Continuing with what has been a tradition here for the last few meetings, for those playing the Ann Arbor District Library's Summer Game, I want to share today's council-specific Summer Game code, A2 Election Day. Ann Arbor has a special election scheduled for August 5. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. But early voting is also available before Election Day from Wednesday, July 30 to Sunday, August 3, at City Hall from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. And the Ann Arbor District Library's Traverwood Branch from 11:00 to 7:00, Mallett's Creek from 11:00 to 7:00, and Westgate Branch from 11:00 to 7:00. It is no surprise that I continue to encourage residents to educate themselves about proposals A and B, which can empower a new downtown library without raising taxes.
Further communication from council? I'd like to request confirmation of the following appointments. I represent the City Council on July 7, 2025, to the Economic Development Corporation Board, Robin Hall and Brian Chambers; to the Transportation Commission, Lauren Dunlap. May I have a motion, please? Move by, Councilmember Cornell. Second by, Councilmember Medina. Discussion, please. All in favor? Opposed? They are approved. We have before us the Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please, to approve the Consent Agenda? Move by, Councilmember Watson. Second by, Councilmember Goozy Edwin. Discussion of the Consent Agenda. Councilmember, aye. Hackman, denier.
Thank you. I didn't want to pull this for discussion, but I did want to highlight it because several constituents reached out about the Seventh Street City-State Agreement, CA 13, which is a resurfacing project in conjunction with MDOT. A lot of folks who live along Seventh in particular are concerned about speeding and needed safety improvements. And for folks that didn't look at the staff memo, it included a response to a question that I asked about what we can expect from coming safety improvements with our federal Safe Streets for All grant. And they will happen in 2026. They plan to install a range of quick-build treatments along the corridor. And these include upgrading buffered bike lanes to protected bike lanes using vertical delineators, pavement marking enhancements to increase visibility and safety, and hardened centerline treatments at key intersections. So that is coming. Thanks.
Further discussion, Councilmember Dish.
Thank you. I also don't want to pull, but I just want to mention the CA 7 Braun Court. We have a development agreement before us tonight. This was a site plan that fell under the Planning Commission jurisdiction and was unanimously approved by that body on May 6. But some features of the site plan are worthy of note because the project used the Sustainability Height exception. It met the terms of that provision regarding solar panels, but it is doing much more. It will be all-electric, using geothermal heating and cooling, electric heat pumps, and other sustainability features related to building materials. And the development agreement itself, which would be approved as part of the Consent Agenda, unless anyone actually pulls it, provides significant enhancements to the streetscape along North Fourth, including an eight-foot-wide sidewalk and a seven-foot-wide amenity zone, which will be really cool, and will continue the DDA-approved design that's to be installed to the south of the Dunbar Tower project. There's also a voluntary park contribution, which might be invested in the Farmers Market, West Park... No, the Farmers Market, West Park, Wheeler Park, or Liberty Plaza. Thank you.
Councilmember Medina.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to very briefly mention CA 7. Thank you to Councilmember Dish for laying all of that out. This was just an opportunity for me, as somebody who's spent a lot of time in Braun Court over the years, to once again recognize, really, some of the work that's being done by the housing developer in this case to really invest back into the community. And so, you know, I think we often hear about these evil developers who don't care about our town, but the reality is, in this case, that the developer in Braun Court is actually part of the reason why the Jim Toy Community Center has a new home. For those who were aware, the Jim Toy Community Center closed its physical space during COVID. And when the developer wanted to redevelop Braun Court into housing in our Carytown area, they reached out and said, "How can we help to support and continue to help this community thrive?" And helped them connect to their new location, where they're opened up on Main Street. I actually just spoke to someone affiliated again this week, where they're hoping to find ways to preserve the existing Braun Court sign and things like that to continue to nod to the history and the community that existed there. And so I just want to thank them for their thoughtfulness as they continue to provide new life to this space as they acknowledge the past that was there as well.
Councilmember Watson.
I wanted to note briefly, CA 9, the resolution to approve the discharge of prohibited restrictive covenants on Hanson Nature Area. This came up in last month's Parks Commission. But when SETI staff was looking to confirm a donation of property adjacent to Hanson Nature Area, they found out that that property actually originally had a deed restricting it, I believe restricting use by African-Americans and I think other minorities as well. And staff in the attorney's office worked to remove this restriction. I mean, although, you know, obviously it was not being enforced, it's a move to affirm our values and to get rid of these restrictions that are all too common. And I also wanted to point out that its staff and the attorney's office kind of following suit with some efforts of residents through justice and deed to map restrictive racial covenants on all property in Washtenaw County and in the city of Ann Arbor. So once again, I'm grateful that we're acting to undo some of this wrongful history.
Further discussion of the Consent Agenda? All in favor? All opposed? The Consent Agenda is approved with eight councilmembers present, all voting the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement with respect to CA 9 and CA 21. We now come to a set of public hearings. Public hearings are an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about the specific subject matter of the public hearing. To speak at a public hearing, one need not have signed up in advance. But your speech must relate to the specific subject matter of the public hearing. That is to say, the specific item on the agenda to which the public hearing relates. Speakers in all instances will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time is expired. When your time is expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Public hearing number one: An ordinance to amend Section 5.28.2, 5.28.3, 5.29.4, 5.29.6, 5.29.7, and 5.29.11 of Chapter 55 Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone in-house who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor T. Ken Garber, second ward. I assume this is a public hearing about the UDC changes that would eliminate site plan public hearings. They'll be replaced with public comment. That means reducing the 15-day advance notice to four days at most. More about that later. There are two reasons for this change that I've heard. First, it will speed up site plan review. That's true, by a few weeks, but this is not now a big bottleneck. Second reason, eliminating public hearings for by-right site plans will actually benefit us, the public, because we can't change projects that meet code. I often hear this, quote, "We don't want the public to come and speak and then leave feeling frustrated and unhappy when the Planning Commission has no discretion," unquote. The notion that this change will help us understand the process is very condescending to me. Neighborhood groups, in my experience, usually know far more about a project than commissioner or council. They also understand the process. I reject the idea that we come up here and just vent when there's nothing you or Planning Commission can do about anything, and then we leave frustrated and angry. That's a caricature. Most comments are thoughtful, not emotional. And many developers value the goodwill of the public and will often change aspects of their by-right site plans to meet public concerns, especially when they're amplified by commission. But four days is not enough notice for us to research these plans. I work many weekends personally, and public comment is important regardless. That's because the UDC is not a complete expression of the public's wishes around development. It falls short, especially in the areas of sustainability and affordable housing. We should demand that every by-right development do better in these areas. So in terms of public comment, I make no distinction between discretionary and by-right. There should be public hearings for both. Now about the four-days' notice. That won't be in the UDC or in the Planning Commission bylaws. It will be up to planning staff. The Open Meetings Act only requires the posting of agendas two hours before the meeting. The Planning Commission bylaws do specify the Friday before the Tuesday of the meeting, but only if feasible. So even the four days are in question. Finally, note that we will lose the council site plan public hearing for PUDs, PUD site plans. We still will have the public hearing for the rezonings. So going forward, we will lose one more opportunity that we currently have for public comment. In short, I'm pretty confident this will go forward tonight, but I think the arguments for it are flawed, and I would prefer to keep the present system. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in-house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Caller with the phone number ending in 534. Do you have a comment? Press star six to unmute your phone. Go ahead.
Thank you.
This is Tom Stalberg calling from Lower Town in Ann Arbor. I'd like to agree with a lot of what Ken Garber just said. And my experience as a subdivision developer in many communities, when we had to appear before planning commission, city council, we did get good input from the public at comments made at those bodies. Things we did not have to change. We made changes and commitments the night of those meetings in response to some pretty good ideas from constituents. So, I think there's a lot of value in having people comment on projects. We're well-known as a well-educated community. There's a lot of good ideas out there, and there is absolutely no harm in having those ideas presented to a developer who can optionally, even if not required, add things into the project that make it even better. So, please reconsider this again in terms of the notice. More notice is better so that people know what's going on in their city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't have any other callers on Zoom.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is, bring it on.
Mark Scobert, 2017, Fair Street. I would just encourage everybody to go to engage.a2.gov, engagea2.gov, engage website. It's a great new website from the city, has lots of information about new projects. There's an email signup, so you can get automatic notifications when there's new projects in your city, so you can stay engaged and continue to send public comment to developers or to your council members. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in house who'd like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two, an ordinance to amend section 5.28.4 of chapter 55 Unified Development Code of Title V. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Ken Garber again. As I understand it, this UDC change means that developers for so-called by right projects will no longer be required to have this community participation meeting. They will for so-called discretionary projects, for example rezonings.
Ma'am? Ma'am?
The big change there is that the timing of the meeting has been moved up from planned pre-submission to up to 45 days post-submission. Staff originally proposed 15, up to 15 days prior to planning commission vote. The commission pushed back against this, rightly pointing out that that would be too late for any major plan changes. So, 45 days post-submission is better timing because it's earlier. Whether that's better than pre-submission is debatable, but I'm okay with the new timing. What I'm not okay with is exempting by right projects from holding these meetings. Just because a plan, in staff's judgment, conforms to the UDC does not change the need and the value of public input. As I mentioned earlier, the UDC is not a complete expression of the community's wishes around development and falls short, especially in the areas of affordability and sustainability. Why are we treating discretionary and by right projects differently in terms of public participation? Both should require a neighborhood meeting, not just discretionary projects. For that reason, I don't support this amendment. I'm okay with the new timing of the meeting, but not with the elimination of community participation meetings for so-called by right developments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in house who'd like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, I don't see anyone online for this hearing.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number three, an ordinance to amend the zoning map, section 5.10.2 of chapter 55 of the city code. 5.9 acres from TDBP Township District to R4E with conditions multifamily residential District 255 through 371, SiO Church Road and 2180 Ann Arbor Celine Road, Robertson Homes rezoning. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Hello. I'm just speaking to say that as someone who drives through that intersection of SiO Church and Ann Arbor Celine basically every day, I support this development. There's not really a whole lot there currently, and I'm also glad to see the city filling in another township island. It would be cool if this included some sort of retail and maybe even denser housing, but something there's much better than nothing.
My name's Tim Carroll, resident of Audubon Drive, Ward 4. I have little to add to what we filed in writing. You have a petition signed by everybody on Audubon Drive, I mean, everybody, most of Merritt Drive. You have a petition that's signed by the only resident to the east side of this parcel. All we can ask is that before you decide this matter, which is darn important to us, of course, is you read carefully and give good consideration of what we have filed. I have little more to say about that. My gut tells me, though, that what is proposed by Robertson is exactly the sort of proposal and the planning commission's decision is exactly why this council adopted the resolution not long ago imposing or asking for a 35-foot limit. I think this is exactly, this is a prime example of why we need such a limit. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in house who'd like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, I don't see any callers online for this hearing.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number four, resolution to approve the Robertson Homes, AKA 75 South Main Site Plan and Development Agreement, 255315371, SiO Church Road, 2180 Ann Arbor Celine Road. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Thank you again, Mayor Taylor. Ken Garber, second ward. I want to commend Robertson Brothers for the fact that the 75-unit development will be all-electric, with the exception of gas backup generator. I'm assuming that also includes induction, stoves and ovens. I think this is an excellent example. So, I want to personally thank Mr. Lawfren, who's in the audience, for that. There's been long discussions around Robertson Brothers Village Project, which, as I understand it, is on hold. That one still contains several hundred units that have been approved with gas heat, and I hope that Robertson Brothers, you know, makes this project tonight the rule, and if it does go forward with the village, that that project also will be all-electric. While I commend the developer, I don't want to let him completely off the hook. I would prefer to see rooftop solar on these units instead of the decks that are currently being planned. But other than that, I'm really pleased and I look forward to future dialogue with Robertson Brothers.
Is there anyone else in house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, we do have a caller online. Caller with the phone number running in 534. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is Tom Stalberg again. I would also like to commend Robertson Brothers on this all-electric project. I think that's very important. I did like some of the aspects of the other Robertson Brothers project, that they included a lot of different mixes of housing types, but as Mr. Garber just said, they could use a little bit more in the sustainability features at that other development. But for here, I'd like to commend them for it. Looking at the site plan, I look at these three-story units, and the height at the midpoint of the peak is 39 feet, and it looks like if you go all the way to the top of the peak, if I'm reading the plan right, that's 44 feet. So, we know in comparing different zonings that an R4E, even taller, would be allowed. In terms of comparing this to other things, like R1, R2 cap out at 30 feet, but you put the bonus of 30% in for electrification, and you get 39 feet. So, you know, trying to compare apples to oranges here a little bit, but if we look at the future comprehensive plan and what it would allow, especially, you know, throwing in the resolution that you put in tonight, somebody could put a pot of three of these Robertson Brothers units on one lot and another three on the lot next door and have six condos for half a million dollar at a peak average of 39 feet in any R1C neighborhood across the whole city. So, I think this is worth approving tonight, but I think you need to consider the ramifications of a similar product elsewhere after the comprehensive plan includes your new resolution. Thank you.
Caller with the phone number running in 534, do you have a comment? Alex Low, do you have a comment? Go ahead.
Hi, this is Alex Low, 2533 Pittsfield, Delaware. I just want to say that I think that this is an example of a development that should, under the new comprehensive plan, be by right citywide. Thank you.
Mayor, I don't have any other callers on the line with their hands up.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number five, resolution to approve amendment one for the Broadway Park redevelopment Brownfield Plan. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Good evening. Rich Fine, Duane Court, I'm in Ward 5. I'm here representing the Ann Arbor Chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby. We're wondering whether the developer of Broadway Park is planning to use fossil gas for space and water heating, or if instead they're going to be using high-efficiency all-electric equipment and thus meeting the requirements of the A20 Carbon Neutrality Plan. In reviewing the site plans, we see mention of installing solar, of using DTE's migraine power plan program, receiving LEED certification, but we couldn't find any statement regarding whether they will be using electricity for space and water heating. The lack of this type of detail typically means that they're using gas. So, we're requesting that council ask Roxbury what fuel they'll be using, and if Roxbury is planning on gas, we ask that council encourage them to shift to all-electric. If this development had originally been planned to use fossil gas, any technical or economic reasoning that was used to do that back in 2020, it's unlikely to apply anymore. Just taking a look at recent proposals approved for development over the last 12 months among multifamily and mixed-use new developments that are of any decent size, more than six units, that have been either proposed or been approved, 15 out of 16 are all-electric. That's a heck of an average. That is something to be proud of. And there is, there are some slight exceptions. There's a minor exception for cooking with gas, and of course, the use of gas for emergency backup power does not count towards being all-electric. The one development that's out there, the one out of the 16 that's not all-electric at 2900 South Main, still has all of the living units as all-electric, although the common areas are not. But that means that in the last 18 months, 16 out of 16 developments are essentially all-electric, at least for the living units. It's worth noting, too, that this list includes two developments that you're approving tonight, Robertson Homes 75 South Main and at Brown Court. Among these, there's PUDs, by rights, height exceptions, not height exceptions.
Thank you.
So, and again, we just ask council to ask the developer and encourage them to go all-electric. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Taylor. Ken Garber again. Yeah, I brought a visual aid this time. I had the same question as Mr. Fine for the developer about gas in this development. This Brownfield Plan is here because Roxbury Group and its associated nonprofit have obtained a lot of state funding in recent years, some of which, I understand, it has spent on site work that we were supposed to fund through the original Brownfield Plan. So, here's my, here's my aide. The original TIF was 17.3 million. Because Roxbury already spent some of the, some of that in state funds, it could have come back with a smaller plan, but it chose to ask for the same 17.3 million. Here's the difference. The first plan was 54% environmental costs, 46% non-environmental. The city capped non-environmental at 8 million. Tonight's plan is 36% environmental, 64% non-environmental, things like the street construction and the parking deck, no cap. Roxbury is seeking reimbursement for $838,000 in loan interest. Roxbury cites higher costs and interest rates. Yes, the pandemic and inflation were setbacks for them, but all developers take risks and taxpayers aren't obligated to mitigate the negative consequences of those risks. And the project, mainly through the Conservancy, has received a lot of state funding. The city will be doing Roxbury a large favor with this Brownfield Plan amendment. Without it, Roxbury would have to come back with a smaller plan for several million dollars less in taxpayer reimbursement because it already spent those, sorry, spent those dollars from the state coffers. Overall, this is a good project. It removes or caps pollution on the site. It adds between 96 and 118 units of housing, at least 15, 15% of these must be affordable under PUD and Brownfield policy. And I thank Roxbury for proposing 22 affordable units. There will be public amenities along the river. The big drawback here, as Mr. Fine said, is that all the buildings will, as far as we know, be heated with fossil gas. This goes against the city's A20 Climate Action Plan. So, we should get something in return for approving this new plan. In my opinion, Roxbury should fully electrify the project, and not just the residential program, but the hotel, the retail, the pavilion, or we should ask for more affordable housing, or both. I wanted to raise these issues earlier with the developer, but when I approached Mr. Dorita outside the Washtenaw County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority meeting last October, he told me he would not be with me, he would not respond to my emails, he would only react to me in public meetings like this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in house who'd like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, I don't see anyone online with their hand up for this meeting or this hearing.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. We have before us the regular meeting minutes of July 7, 2025. May I have a motion, please, to approve these minutes? Moved by Councilmember Watson, second by Councilmember Dish. Discussion of the minutes. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. B1, an ordinance to amend section 5.28.2, 5.28.3, 5.29.4, 5.29.6, 5.29.7, and 5.29.11 of chapter 55 Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Dish, second by Councilmember Gauzy Edwin. Discussion, please, of B1. Councilmember Dish.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just so there's no confusion, there are two ways to give comments on projects before they reach city council. That's through public hearings held at the city planning commission and community participation meetings held by developers. This amendment concerns public hearings held at the planning commission. The commission and council value public participation, and we value the time it takes people to offer it. Many site plans reviewed by the planning commission do not involve discretion. The commission applies criteria, and if the criteria are met, the project has to be approved. approved. As you heard earlier, this amendment would mean that we no longer require public hearings for these, in part because this does slow down the process. It's a two-week advanced notice. You have to know that the project is ready so that when you make the two-week advance notice, you're not going to have to cancel that public hearing, and so it's actually more than two weeks' time that it can add to the process. Moreover, I don't mean any, I honestly don't mean any disparagement in making this remark, but people can get frustrated when they come and take the time to speak to a public hearing, and the commission says, "Sorry, we actually can't make any changes to this plan." So, anyway, because we have no legal authority to do so. So what this amendment does is it reserves public hearings for decisions on projects and changes to the development code that involve discretion. Those are rezonings, planned unit developments, special exception use projects, and amendments to the zoning code. That's going to be relevant in the future when we zone the plan. So these will, there will be notice of public hearings published 15 days prior to the meeting and sent to property owners, occupants, and neighborhood associations within 300 feet. Now, public comment will be provided for site plans that the Planning Commission approves without sending them along to council. The Planning Commission is exploring bylaws and other changes to provide as much advance notice as possible, and actually, Planning Commission may want direction from us, council, on what we had in mind for public comment for these site plans. Was it at the beginning of the Planning Commission meeting, or did we think designated comment periods before the site plan so that you could gather all the comments together on the same subject matter, and people can kind of work together in the ways that the public does? So that's all I have to say.
Further discussion of B1? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. B2, an ordinance to amend section 5.28.4 of chapter 55 Unified Development Code of Title V. Moved by Councilmember Redina, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion of B2. Councilmember Dish.
So I know that, like the other one, we've spoken about this before, so I will just be very quick. These are the meetings held by developers, and as you heard, these community participation meetings will need to happen within 45 days after the Planning Department staff accepts an application for staff review. They are happening pre-submitting right now, and as Councilmember Redina mentioned the last time we talked about this, that this change will help us avoid being contacted from community members that have attended those meetings before there's even anything in stream, and we really don't know. They know more about the project than we do. So there is, it will calibrate the community meeting with the staff technical review, and again, these will only happen when a project requires a public hearing, although notice must be made when a site plan application is made. And community participation meetings will also be publicized on A2 engage, which greatly extends the notification beyond the immediate neighborhood. So hope you'll support, I'm going to support this one, too.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ayer.
Thank you. I just want to briefly connect this and the previous agenda item to our economic development resolutions that we passed last year as a council, and this was part of our report that really looked at, top to bottom, our processes throughout the city that are causing housing costs to rise. And one of the things that we found is there are elements of our building and development process that have been sort of built up over time, layers added, that aren't really adding value to the process, and all they're doing is adding time, and time is money. And so even adding a few weeks onto a development process and hauling, you know, a development team in with their attorneys, that adds money, that adds cost to housing. And so, you know, this is one of the things, we don't have a lot of levers that we can pull as a city council to affect housing costs in our city, but we're certainly doing everything we can to look at what we can do. And we'll talk later about housing supply, and that's a big one, but the development process is one that can't be overlooked, and I'm happy that Planning Commission has done this work and staff and brought this to us. Thank you.
Further discussion of B2? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. B3, an ordinance to amend zoning map, section 5.10.2 of chapter 55 City Code, 5.9 acres from TWP Township District to R4E with conditions, multifamily residential district, 255 through 371 Sciouche Church Road and 2180 Ann Arbor Celine Road. Robertson Homes rezoning. Moved by Councilmember Ayer, seconded by Councilmember Ackman. Discussion, please, of B3. Councilmember Ayer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to begin by acknowledging the concerns that we have heard from nearby residents to this project. I do really appreciate the time that neighbors have taken to study the proposal, to communicate with council, and to stay engaged throughout the process. After reviewing the materials, listening to public input, and conferring with staff, I will be supporting this rezoning request. The proposed R4E zoning is consistent with our comprehensive plans draft land use plan, land use map, which has designated this area as transition from the beginning. So while there may have been some discussion early on about other categories, both drafts of the map show this designation, and the rationale is sound. The site is located less than a quarter mile from South Main Street, which is identified in the RIDE's 2045 plan as a future high-frequency transit corridor, and it's adjacent to office and commercial uses. It's exactly the kind of area where walkable, more dense housing makes sense. This proposal is also actually far below the density that R4E zoning allows, some may say unfortunately. While R4E permits up to 75 units per acre, the site plan comes in at just 12 units per acre, which is below even the adjacent R2A zoning, which allows up to 17. The buildings are limited to 34 feet, with rooftop decks bringing a small portion to 40, and the developer is committed to nearly 50% open space, which is significant. I've also heard concerns about compatibility with surrounding homes, and I'm certainly sympathetic to those concerns, but it's important to know that this project is not student housing. It will have a homeowners association, and it's intended to offer townhome-style housing for a range of residents. If nuisance issues arise, like late-night noise or lighting, we have ordinances to address those, and I would take those concerns seriously. This project aligns with our broader goals as a city, supporting electrification, walkability, reduced vehicle miles traveled, and increased housing supply in areas that make sense. So I think it's a step forward in addressing our city's housing needs, and I'll be voting yes.
Councilmember Dish.
Thank you, Councilmember Ayer, for all of that. I do just want to underscore a couple of things, that this is a proposal to rezone some recently, several recently annexed parcels, whose addresses you've already heard, from township to R4E with conditions, and the condition is limiting the R4E zoning designation, which allows unlimited height, to 50 feet, to structures of 50 feet. And this does prepare the way for 75 townhome for-sale residential units in 12 three-story 34-foot buildings. So R4E provides unlimited height, the proposed condition takes account of the zoning of the neighboring parcels, which are a mix of residential zoning, including R2A and R4B. R2A is a 30-foot height limit, so unlimited height would not be appropriate. And though the condition allows 50 feet of height, the petitioner clarifies that the measurement to the parapet will be 34 feet, and with decks, it will be 40 feet. So it's a 10-foot increase over the neighboring parcels. We have received a petition that objected to the 40-foot height because theirs is a neighborhood of one- and two-story homes. The legal height in those neighborhoods nonetheless is 30 feet. So that's how we think about it, not, it's, we think about the conditions in relation to the allowable height in the neighborhoods, not the actual height of structures in the neighborhood. So I'm grateful for the participation of the neighbors, and when we talk about the site plan, we'll talk about some of the changes that their participation brought about, which I'm sure will make it a better project. But for now, we are just voting on the zoning, so let's do that.
Councilmember Ackman. Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved with eight council members present, all voting in affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement. DB1, resolution to approve the Robertson Homes, aka 75 South Main Site Plan and Development Agreement, 255315371 Sciouche Church Road, 2180 Ann Arbor Celine Road. Moved by Councilmember Ackman, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion, please, of DB1. Councilmember Dish.
Okay, so, yes, infill project, 75 townhomes, 12 three-story, wait, is that right? Yes, it is right. Sorry, I'm lost in my notes. It was that kind of day. Yes, 12 three-story buildings with 167 parking spaces, 150 of which will be in garages underneath units, which is great. The proposed project is consistent, not only with what we look forward to, but also with the comprehensive plan land use element, which recommends single-family attached townhomes for the site, which is what these are. That housing typology also aligns with the sustainability framework of the comp plan, which echoes the need for diverse housing, including affordability and sustainability features. These homes will be sold for roughly half the cost of single-family detached homes. The buildings will be all-electric with no natural gas connection except as an emergency backup. In addition, they are using extremely efficient energy, building envelope, science and materials, which is important, plus efficient appliances, and more. And in response to community feedback, the site plan provides two rows of evergreen trees to screen between the upper-left corner of Sciouche Church Road and the house next door. The project also has a larger-than-required setback between this project and the neighboring project off of Sciouche Church. There will be new sidewalks throughout the development, and some of these sidewalks will connect to existing AATA bus stops along Sciouche Church and South Main. So those are good features. In addition, the development agreement specifies a $46,000-plus voluntary parks contribution, and it memorializes the commitment to all-electric, which makes it thoroughly enforceable.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ackman.
I appreciate Councilmember Dish going over the things that are being done to mitigate any impacts on neighboring properties. I don't think you mentioned the eight-foot privacy fence is also in there. But while I'm talking about this, I couldn't help but notice, as you were talking about the parking spots, it seemed like a good time to bring up people's fears around our lack of parking requirements, parking minimums on developments, and parking still gets built if people need it. The point is, the city is not enforcing them to build more than what is needed. So thanks for highlighting that, and I look forward to supporting this and bringing more neighbors into the fourth ward.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. DS1, resolution to approve amendment number one for the Broadway Park redevelopment Brownfield Plan. Moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Gauzy Edwin. Discussion, please, of DS1. Councilmember Cornell.
Sorry it took a minute for my computer to boot up. I know that we have Mr. Vogt from the Brownfield Authority here, we know that the developer's here as well, and so I believe is Mr. Delacorte to answer any questions that colleagues might have. Eight years ago, this was, this Brownfield was approved, and so this is not, this money has already been allocated to this developer, and the agreed-to environmental elements to this project have been delivered. So the funding adjustment here reflects that the developer found funding, as has been mentioned, for those elements, and are shifting TIF to infrastructure. So the bridge at Argo, that is a huge improvement to that area, is a fine example of that. And this is actually how we want the TIF process to work, to provide public benefit for public dollars. And it's really rare, I want to point out, from a development standpoint, that the project is being led with public improvements right now. Unfortunately, it's usually an afterthought on how to improve sites and to provide public benefit with dollars that are left over. So the developer's actually doing what we would expect, and is doing great stuff for our community. And so I want to thank Councilmember Malik, who isn't here but has been a rock-star colleague in asking staff questions regarding the opportunity for additional sustainability elements. I know that that was brought up by some public speakers. And in continuing those conversations with staff today, I was informed that the developer is evaluating how to add more charging station for electric vehicles, electrifying the affordable housing elements, which is still early enough in the planning that these types of improvements have been made, or can be made, excuse me, and electrifying the hotel's HVAC system. An HVAC system is an incredibly large consumer of electricity and power, so this is a good thing. I was wondering if the developer would be willing to just briefly walk us through the public improvements that have already been made in this project, all funded without the TIF dollars, and therefore making this reallocation financially feasible and in line with what we want our Brownfield dollars to be used for.
Good evening, members of city council. My name is David Dorita, and I'm a member of the Roxbury Group. I'm also here with James Van Dyke, the president of the Roxbury Group, and also working on this project with us, and I know, and Elizabeth from SME. So I want to address the question that immediately came up, and then these guys are going to keep me honest, because this is a big and complex project, and the description that was made is an absolutely accurate one. First of all, eight years, scary. It was a long time, and we're always proud when we can actually get to the end of a very long road and actually do what we said we were going to do. We've got more of that to do, but it is really the ability, and I think the flexibility of this body, and I have to also obviously give a lot of credit to Nathan and the team at Washtenaw County, to see the opportunity to redeploy funds in eligible uses when we were able and fortunate enough to secure state dollars a few years back for items that frankly, when we stood before this very body, I guess, six years ago, five years ago in the process of entitlement, we were very clear we needed more money for. So we did public fundraising, and we've done private fundraising, and both of those are bearing fruit, and I think they're proving something that a lot of people question, which is whether public-private partnership could create public space like this. So to answer your question quickly, what those dollars allowed us to do, and why we're asking for the shift now, is they allowed us to do the things you're seeing in front of you today, and allowed us to produce a public space which we will genuinely cut the ribbon on in September of this year and open to the public, not before we get a single certificate of occupancy for a residential unit, which is what our development agreement said, but before we even start building any residential units. So we're very proud of that, and it would not have been possible off the incredible support from the state. And what is also helping us do right now is advance some of the public infrastructure that will ultimately allow vertical construction, we hope to start before the end of the year. So that is a very generic answer, and I've got smarter people next to me who could get much more technical, but I wanted to at least explain, that's why you see what you see there now.
Thank you. If there are other questions, we'll be sure to roll into you. Great for you.
Do you want us to leave?
You don't have to go far, but, but thank you. Further discussion? Councilmember Dish.
Could I hear that list of public improvements? He said not to go far.
I apologize. Could you repeat the question, Councilman?
I asked if you could tell us the list of public improvements that you've done.
Well, it's a long list, and I think I did send some data points over because I was afraid we'd miss some of them, but it started when this, the last time we stood before this body, this was arguably the most contaminated site inside the city limits of Ann Arbor, and it has since then been remediated to residential standards, which involved, this is a number I love using, 20,000 tons of soil being removed from this site and replaced. It involved balancing the land to maintain its activity as a floodplain, within the floodplain and the floodway. It did involve the much-harolded placement of the bridge to the Argo, which you can see, and the inclusion now of the public pathways that connect about 1,200 feet of waterfront. It is now involving the installation of the Habitat along that waterfront, which helps make this a site that one of our sustainable components is. make this a site that one of our sustainable components is that this site naturally drains and cleans stormwater to the river, not going into the storm system of the city of Ann Arbor. It has begun the process of what we call ground improvement that will actually allow the buildings to be built, including the public pavilion, which was a very exciting and, I think, much sought-after component of this project, which will allow 365-day-a-year public events at the site. We hope to break ground on that project, but right now we've just done the ground improvements for it. I will say, to the point about how a project like this can induce private investment, by which I don't mean money-making investment, I mean donations, we have raised, because of the support that was anticipated both through the Brownfield TIF and because of the money we received from the state legislature and Eagle Grants, which we've received, we've been able to raise so far $10 million in private donations to support the development of Broadway Park West that will make that pavilion possible, and we hope to break ground on that this year as well. What else have we built?
No, just public infrastructure and the utilities. This phase will conclude with us installing all public utilities and completing the stormwater system that obviously will be turned over to the city of Ann Arbor, the water system turned over to the city of Ann Arbor at the end of all that. And then, in our view, although this may look to some as a subdivision, we really wanted this to be an extension of the city onto this reclaimed land. And so a lot of what we're doing now, a lot of the land balancing we're doing is to actually put in the roads and the sidewalks and the parallel parking and the rest of the required parking, 450 spaces of it that were needed for this site. So we're about halfway through that long list of things, and so later this year we'll be commencing on the balance of that.
Thank you. You are not only in my ward, but in my neighborhood.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilmember Cornell.
This is really quick. We just talked about the pavilion, and the developer failed to mention that the pavilion, although it was not required to, is a mass timber build.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. DS2, resolution authorizes summary publication of ordinance 25-24 and ordinance to men section 5.2.8.2, 5.28.3, 5.28.4, 5.29.6, 5.29.7, 5.29.11 of chapter 55 Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember... Second by Councilmember Radina. Discussion, please, of DS2. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. DS3, resolution authorizing summary publication of ordinance 2525 and ordinance to men section 5.24.4 of chapter 55 Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, citizen participation. Moved by Councilmember Dish. Second by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion, please, of DS3. All in favor? Opposed? It's approved. DC1, resolution to reappoint Jessica Francis to the Independent Community Police Oversight Commission. Moved by Councilmember Gazie Edwin. Second by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion, please, of DC1. All in favor? Opposed? It's approved. DC2, resolution to reappoint Michelle Marusi to the Local Development Finance Authority as a non-registered elector. Moved by Councilmember Cornell. Second by Councilwoman Iyer. Discussion? Councilmember Cornell.
I think it's important in this instance to put out, or to put forward, that Ms. Marusi is actually, runs the Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship at Washtenaw Community College. And the LDFA dollars include Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti within its Smart Zone designation, so WCC is part of that. And the technology that's coming out of WCC is a lot different than what's coming out of Eastern and U of M. So this is really great to have her voice and her contribution in how we are supporting our high-tech startups.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved with seven... Strike that? It is approved with eight council members present, all voting in affirmative, thus satisfying the seven vote requirement. DC3, resolution regarding the draft comprehensive land use plan. Moved by Councilmember Iyer. Second by Councilmember Dish. Discussion, please, of DC3. Councilmember Radina.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all the residents for joining us tonight to share feedback, and to those of you who have contributed earlier to improving this resolution. I will be supporting this resolution tonight, which advances what I believe will remain one of the most progressive and thoughtful comprehensive land use plans in the nation, a plan that continues to reflect my commitment to advancing housing growth and access in our community. From the outset, I promised residents that I would champion gentle growth in our neighborhoods, recognizing that if we are going to seriously address our city's need for more housing, that we do need more housing in every part of our city. I believe this vision delivers on that promise while also acknowledging a community desire for us to develop a land use plan that empowers the existence of identifiable residential neighborhoods that are welcoming, diverse, and more affordable, but are also distinct in form from more dense transition and hub districts. This resolution continues to enable additional housing options throughout, opportunities throughout Ann Arbor by allowing a broader array of housing types like duplexes and triplexes in areas that are currently restricted to single-detached structures, and requests an expedited process to advance these new housing types to more urgently address our housing supply needs. At the same time, this resolution sets a clear expectation that our highest-density housing will be focused in major hubs and along transit corridors. This not only aligns with the promises I made to our community, but delivers upon our values of sustainability and transit access, and aims to ensure that the most dense growth happens adjacent to jobs, services, and infrastructure necessary to support vibrant city life. This resolution acknowledges the obvious pressures created by the University of Michigan enrollment growth, and explicitly addresses this pressure by calling for more high-density, student-oriented housing in hub and transition areas, which in my view will help to support lively, dense, student-focused neighborhoods that can support a diverse array of restaurants and retail, and hopefully relieve some of the sprawling impact of more and more existing single-detached homes from being converted into single-detached student rentals, and eventually deteriorating over time. I will also renew a call that I have made many times before for the university to build more housing on land that they already own throughout the city. Additionally, we are asking for a data-driven process, recommending a review to see how well these reforms are working and to make adjustments as needed. This vision, which still creates more housing opportunity than the Minneapolis model, where they have succeeded in keeping housing costs flat despite meteoric increases elsewhere, remains focused on a vision of affordability, equity, and sustainability. Finally, this resolution includes clear standards and expectations, is rooted in robust public engagement and responsiveness to the community's feedback, and recognizes that our work isn't done when this plan is adopted. I'm confident that with this resolution, we can lay a foundation for an Ann Arbor that is more welcoming, more affordable, and more sustainable, and that increases housing opportunities everywhere in our city in a way that can be accomplished with broad public support. I urge your support of the resolution and look forward to working together to see this plan through so that we can begin the real hard work of zoning our city accordingly. Thank you.
Councilmember Dish.
You all don't make it easy to sit in these seats. You've been critical, but you've been kind. You've presented thoughtful arguments about flexibility, and you've made an impressive show of pictorial examples that it's hard to argue with. This resolution, however, does some things that I feel need to be done. It provides direction to the Planning Commission in a timely fashion so that some changes can be incorporated with the second-round revisions to the draft plan without significant delay of the point where both bodies approve the plan and release it for the 63-day comment period. I want to note that Planning Commission has already made expansive revisions to the second draft of the plan, so there was going to be a third draft, no matter what. And the additions that we're calling for here are going to cost more, but the revisions already were not going to cost nothing. The resolution also communicates to a broad coalition of progressives in the community, of which you are part, who supported our election and whose support delivered us the affordable housing mileage and the sustainability mileage by roughly 70% of voting individuals. Some of these folks have anxiety about the plan around points that we believe can be specified or clarified, and so we are trying to show that we're taking their feedback into account, and I know that you don't agree with all of it. The resolution supports equal treatment. Every area of this city that is currently zoned for single-family detached housing or duplicate housing will see a meaningful increase in housing opportunity. It allows a threefold increase in R1 and one additional unit per parcel in areas currently zoned for duplex. The resolution does not speak to residential areas currently zoned higher than R1 and R2. It follows the definition of residential on page 110 of the plan. This resolution also wards off the pitfall of Minneapolis that Adam Goodman laid out. The Minneapolis plan envisioned triplexes in all of its R1 areas, but in the zoning phase made triplexes impossible to build because the zoning did not change dimensional standards and other zoning requirements to facilitate the greater range of housing. This resolution does not make triplexes impossible to build. It explicitly recommends that duplexes and triplexes be provided widespread opportunity and ease of development in these lowest-density areas. Ease of development is a call for reform to dimensional standards. Without such reform, the implementation phase will betray the plan. The plan also allows significant housing opportunity to be added along arterials, transit corridors, places adjacent to campus, and in downtown. This council has been approving housing like this already. There's 721 South Forest, a 733-bed project that is the first high-rise outside of downtown in many years. This council also approved 740 Packard, which will bring over 1,000 new beds.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish. Iyer.
I wish. I wish I was her. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start by expressing my deep appreciation to the many residents who have engaged with this planning process so far through public meetings, surveys, emails, and personal conversations. Some of the most impactful feedback I've received has come from those who don't usually speak up and engage in the public process. That feedback has shaped how I've approached this resolution and why I believe it's the right next step. This resolution reaffirms our shared commitment to legalizing multifamily housing in all areas of the city in service of the goal of making Ann Arbor a more affordable, equitable, and sustainable community. It also recognizes something I hear over and over again: residents support additional housing, and they want it done in a way that's generally compatible with the built environment. At the same time, I want to acknowledge that some neighborhoods are already under extreme market pressure. In areas like Lower Burns Park, which I represent, we're seeing homes converted into high-priced student rentals or redeveloped into expensive single-family homes at a pace that outstrips much of the rest of the city. Many of us have said we want near-campus neighborhoods to continue being places where a diverse mix of people can live. If that's truly our goal, then we need to be willing to take intentional steps to make it possible, because the market will do otherwise. That means tailoring our implementation tools to manage pressures that are already distorting outcomes. While this resolution doesn't single out any neighborhood, it does recognize tools we can use to respond with nuance and responsibility when we get to zoning. If we care about equitable outcomes, we need to acknowledge that the market is not impacting every part of the city in the same way. I do believe that even with this iterative process, we are on track to adopt one of the most progressive land use plans in the country, and I want to note that I and other council members are looking closely at what is working and what is not working in other cities, and we are not wanting to repeat mistakes. This resolution strengthens the plan by making it more actionable and more responsive to what we've heard. It commits us to data transparency, to evaluating outcomes, and to coming back in five years to make adjustments if needed. It moves us closer to a comprehensive plan that can actually be implemented with broad community support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to start by thanking the advocates who suggested changes to this resolution. You made it better, and I also appreciate the cosponsors for making these important changes. I'll be supporting this resolution because it represents what I think is real progress toward creating more housing in Ann Arbor and building a city where more people, not fewer, can afford to live. As others have said, this resolution sets a citywide baseline for multifamily housing by affirming that duplexes and triplexes should be allowed in every neighborhood. That's a huge win. For neighborhoods that currently allow only one type of housing, this opens the door to a greater variety: homes that work for families, seniors, and individuals at different life stages. It's about giving people options where there have been very few. I know this plan does not deliver everything, or I should say, this resolution and the direction does not deliver everything that some of us want right now. I share aspiration for ambitious reforms, and I will continue to advocate for them. But we can't lose sight of what this achieves: a clear commitment to legalize small-scale multifamily housing everywhere, and the direction to make those homes feasible to build and to monitor our progress. That means tackling lot size, setbacks, and other barriers during the zoning phase, which I've been talking about and pushing for since the day I took office. I'm on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I see how this plays out all the time. Some say this is capitulation. It is not. There will always be voices who want to preserve the status quo and oppose new housing, but that approach is not sustainable for our community. Doing nothing is not an option. I've worked hard to push back against misinformation, and frankly, against some appalling exclusionary language, including suggestions that Ypsilanti should be the solution to our housing crisis. I've even had people respond to my own story of growing up in multifamily housing, gasp as a child, by saying to my face, "Well, maybe your family just wouldn't be able to live here." These conversations are not abstract to me. They are personal. They inform my role as a council member, and I remain fully committed to the goals of the comprehensive plan: housing abundance, equity, and sustainability. This resolution, as others have mentioned, provides clarity for residents who have been confused about what's on the table. It positions us to adopt a plan that will hold up and be implemented, because a plan that dies in political gridlock helps no one. To my fellow advocates for progressive land use reform, I want to say this: I hear your concerns. I share your sense of urgency. I also know that what happens when we let perfect be the enemy of progress: we get nothing. Tonight, we have the opportunity to secure a foundational win, affirming in our comprehensive plan should allow duplexes and triplexes everywhere in the city. That's a meaningful step toward diverse, abundant housing stock that Ann Arbor desperately needs. We can't afford to stand still. We all want a city where teachers, nurses, young families, and seniors can find a home, and that means acting now. My goal is not additional resolutions to steer this plan; it's getting a comprehensive plan that we can adopt and implement so that real housing gets built. This resolution moves us closer to that. I want us to pass it and keep moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank my colleagues who worked on this and continued working on it through the weekend to make it better. I also want to thank everyone who called and came tonight. All this shows that the work we're doing is complicated. It impacts everyone living in the city and everyone who wants to be our neighbor. And for those who suggest voices aren't being heard or are being ignored, I hope the evolution by which this resolution arrived here at the table tonight is strong proof to the contrary. I also hope that, as a body, our ability to agree to disagree with respect is a form of leadership and a model for our community at large as we continue through this process. I'm voting no on this resolution. I believe we need more housing of all types in every neighborhood. This council has already taken steps to cap building heights in our residential areas. While I disagreed and continue to disagree with inserting council into a process that Planning Commission was tasked with managing and continues in earnest, that said at that time and now, I'm fundamentally opposed to action that would slow down, impede, or interfere with the work the Planning Commission is doing on the plan. More so, when I ran for office, I promised people who trusted me with their vote that I see housing and advancing our A20 goals as entirely codependent. Housing is the fulcrum in realizing our climate goals. Our lack of housing means people, students, seniors, teachers, skilled tradespersons, first responders have to commute into the city to work here. These commutes from places like Chelsea and Saline and Belleville contribute more carbon to the atmosphere than preserving a whole forest would mitigate, and it happens every single day. So here we have an opportunity to correct this imbalance, to put our foot on the gas and increase housing and welcome new neighbors, and we are, with this resolution, committing the city to not getting past second gear. I also want to touch briefly on how environmental issues are equity issues, meaning the equitable sharing of environmental burdens. No single group should bear a disproportionate share of environmental harms, which includes living farther away from your work, your school, your kid's daycare, your doctor's appointments, et cetera. And those choices are completely dependent on housing not being available in those places. Equity also demands everyone have the ability to have meaningful involvement in environmental decision-making. By limiting housing in any way, we create barriers to residency that negatively impact participation in our local politics. People who can't live here can't vote here and are boxed out of decisions that directly impact their finances, their quality of life, and their health. And most importantly, environmental equity recognizes that certain groups face historic and ongoing systemic barriers to environmental protections. Housing abundance throughout the city in all neighborhoods addresses these inequities. My sincere hope is that this resolution, when considered by Planning Commission, is further improved to address some of the further improved to address some of these real concerns that are urgent. Our world is on fire, and as leaders, we should address it.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone as well, for also coming here tonight and sharing your thoughts and your concerns. I also would like to thank my colleagues for really working, as Councilmember Cornell said, to make this resolution better. So I will not be supporting this resolution tonight, and I'd like to talk a little bit about why. So, you know, I've heard the concerns in our neighborhoods, and I take them seriously. I support gentle, small-scale density that would help us create homes for our missing middle, which I know many in our community agree with, but capping housing at three units across the board, especially while we are still in the midst of drafting the comprehensive plan, may block creative solutions that fit within neighborhood form and help keep housing attainable and affordable for those who need it most, like working families, essential workers, and others. I believe that there may be some merit to some aspects of this resolution, but I do not believe that discussing it now with this level of specificity is either the time nor the place. If this kind of directive had been in place years ago, it is likely that a development like Pittsfield Village, a beloved neighborhood that offers affordability and community through thoughtful density, would be extremely difficult to build in many of our residential areas. Every day, we delay making room for more neighbors is another day we push people out of our city, and we miss out on their social and economic contributions. In this moment, I'd like to see us invest in public education about where development actually tends to happen, which is rarely in low-density neighborhoods, and how we benefit from welcoming more neighbors. We become more safer. We become a healthier community when we have more people live here. I would also like to see us center the voices of residents, most marginalized by housing access, and helping to shape how we respond and lead during this ongoing process. That could mean creating something like the Community Leadership Council, similar to what we have created for the Dunbar Tower development, where those most impacted help guide solutions and help us to understand the impact of these complex decisions. We might also explore tools like Community Benefits Agreement, which some cities use to give residents a meaningful say in setting development priorities, whether that's affordability, infrastructure, tree preservation, or accessibility. While this approach would need to be tailored to Ann Arbor, it's worth considering in areas undergoing change. And as we develop housing policy, it is critical that we also engage partners like Avalon Housing, the Washtenaw Housing Alliance, and others, working diligently on the front lines of housing justice whenever we consider policies that impact where people can and cannot live. Finally, I'd love to see a deeper collaboration with the University of Michigan through something like a joint task force on housing and land use, so that together we're ensuring students, working families, older adults, and others all have equitable access to housing across our city. While I can't support this resolution as written, I do support a path forward that balances affordability and centers community voices throughout the process. Thank you.
Ann Arbor deserves a plan that meets the needs of current and future residents when it comes to affordability, equity, and sustainability. I appreciate everyone who came out tonight. I took the opportunity to listen and consider the many life experiences, more than a few mirroring my own, that residents brought to City Hall tonight. I heard the support expressed for the plan and the skepticism expressed about the resolution by supporters and detractors of the new plan alike. Since part of this resolution speaks to residents who have called for balance, I wanted to talk about where that comes from. I've heard a lot at my ward info sessions and phone calls and emails from people concerned about the contours of the plan. I've said it before, but I have also ridden on a bus tour of the historically black neighborhoods here in Ann Arbor with the Community Leadership Council, and even heard specifically from them, speaking on development, how their neighborhoods have changed, many issues that are in tension. You know, after the broad conversations I've had, and I'm focusing on the full conversations, I learned that a lot of residents don't know that the city and Planning Commission can use form-based code in the implementation phase of the plan. This form-based code can fit new development within the built form of a neighborhood and its streetscape, including trees and sidewalks. Form-based code can also impact neighborhood walkability, mix of unit types, and features that allow a wide range of people, young adults, seniors, families, and individual adults, to live nearby. By communicating that the city and Planning Commission are considering these issues, this resolution lays groundwork to get more people on board. My cosponsors and I worked hard on this resolution. Every word in it isn't perfect, but I can live with everything the resolution expresses. It articulates the tools Planning Commission has at its disposal and affirms the support for increased diversity of housing options. It also addresses some widespread concerns, like asking for limitations of short-term rentals, which are known to reduce housing supply in the transition category. New short-term non-owner occupied rentals are already prohibited in residential zones. I continue to appreciate feedback and conversation on the draft plan, and I'm confident the final draft will move the city forward in addressing the city's housing needs.
Further discussion? Councilmember Dish.
I just wanted to raise one more point, which is really going to be more in the nature of a question. So in the list of bullets where we illustrate possible tools to be used for the zoning phase, I think a lot of you picked up on the limits on units and bedrooms and bathroom per unit. And the reason why that's there, or, I mean, it's just an illustration of something that could be used, but what I have read about college towns like ours, and actually from an article that does even mention Ann Arbor, is that the more units and bedrooms and bathrooms per unit that zoning allows per parcel, the higher the price in certain neighborhoods that investors and financiers are willing to make available to a developer to pay for that existing parcel. So in R1 and R2s that are close enough to campus, this pushes up rents and pushes up housing costs rapidly, because they're able to get into a bidding war for property. So I would love to hear what you know about what other cities are doing about this phenomenon that does happen in college towns, and how we give home seekers who don't have access to the kind of capital investment that developers can raise, how do we give them a fighting chance at being able to purchase or rent some of the new units that I hope will someday exist in triplexes, in R1 and R2 areas? And there are geographic differences in the markets in this city depending on how far you are from central campus. So I'm interested in how to deal with that, and I think you all would be, and not from subsidy, right, because we're doing subsidy for affordable housing, but how do we do this in these neighborhoods? So that, by way of, that's why it's there. It's not about excluding students at all. It's about the issue of, you know, prices rising out of control, and how do we control it? Thanks.
So I've spent many years as a mayor and a council member working to expand housing options and supply and welcoming neighbors everywhere throughout our city, and this council has also, time and time again, acted to do the same. We have an affordability crisis. Since 2014, median A2 rent has increased at 2.5% times the rate of inflation. Medium A2 home prices have increased at four times the rate of inflation, and the only solution to that, to that out-of-control cost growth, is to entitle additional housing supply. The draft plan envisioned by this resolution, if zoning can accomplish that vision, would reach that goal, would accomplish that goal throughout the city decisively and without exception. It would promote equity, sustainability, and affordability. We here on council, we listen to professional staff, commissioners, community members as a whole, and it is our task and our challenge as elected officials to represent existing residents and to serve as trustees for future residents. For some in the room, the adjustments requested by the resolution rub against both of these nodes, both your view of the long-term good and your personal wishes. You do not feel represented, and I hear that, and I regret that. For my part, however, the resolution, it does not exist in a vacuum. It looks to interact with an existing document, the plan as it is now. And it is a plan that if it will be modified in accordance with the resolution, as my colleagues have articulated, it will be and will remain an progressive, equitable document that promotes affordability, a plan that, if implemented, will entitle much-needed multifamily housing supply throughout the city. And crucially, if modified in accordance with the terms of this resolution, it will be acceptable to more members of the community. The resolution addresses some disinformation regarding height, zoning tools, multiple districts, STRs, and requests tweaks of the current directionality of the plan to address what I believe to be the organic concerns of a substantial portion of residents who are unaffiliated with either side committed to this debate already. It is our job to balance and to lead, to balance community cross-currents and to lead. Now, that leadership, it shouldn't be neither timid nor heedless. I view my task as looking to bring the community to something like a place of acceptable collective discomfort. The club is not an end state, and pushing through an unimplementable plan accomplishes nothing. The plan is a vision document that requires years of follow-through to be successful, to accomplish its goal of equity, sustainability, and affordability. For my part, I believe that the draft plan envisioned by the resolution will provide for increased multifamily supply, and again, decisively without exception, throughout the community, and will do so in a way that better reflects the aggregate acceptable discomfort, and thus, crucially, be better implemented in the long term. This judgment, it may be right, it may be wrong. Reasonable minds, even those generally allied, can reasonably disagree. And for my part, I'm always grateful for the conversation. Further discussion? Councilmember Adina.
Thank you, Mayor. Acknowledging that some colleagues have expressed disagreement with the resolution tonight, and there are several, we are also short several colleagues, and/or there may be a desire to vote differently on the policy direction and the contractual amendment required to complete the plan, I would move to divide the question, to consider separately the policy of the resolution from the final resolved clause, which stipulates the contractual terms.
Does that require a second? Seconded by, Councilmember Iyer, discussion. All in favor for the division? Posed? The question is divided. Let us, is there any discussion on the policy question? Any further discussion of the policy question? All in favor of the policy question? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Cornell. Yes, does everyone understand what we're doing here? Thank you.
Councilmember Cornell?
No.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison, absent. Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Malik, absent. Councilmember Adina?
Yes.
Councilmember Gazi Edwin?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackman?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs, absent. Motion carries.
Further discussion of the contract amendment question? I've got Councilmember Dish, then Gazi Edwin.
I'm just wondering, were we going to postpone the financial question? The contract?
We certainly can. Councilmember, I'm sorry. You wish. Or maybe not.
Maybe not.
I think the motion on the table is the contractual question route. You can certainly move to postpone it, but it hasn't been moved yet.
Councilmember Dish?
If I still have the floor?
You do.
I would like to move to postpone the contractual financing question.
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting. Thank you.
Seconded by, Councilmember Adina. Further discussion, postponement? All in favor of the postponement? Posed? Do you like a roll call? It is postponed. We, Ms. Cord, we have the pleasure of a closed session today.
No, thank you, ma'am.
We have before us the Clerk's Report of Communications, Petition, and Referrals. May I have a motion, please, to approve the Clerk's report? Moved by, Councilmember Dish. Seconded by, Councilmember Watson. Discussion. All in favor? Posed? The Clerk's report is approved. Do you have communications today from our city attorney?
No, thank you, ma'am.
We have public comment overflow. Public comment overflow is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment overflow time, one needs to have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Speakers in all instances and per prior will have two minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Our first public speaker overflow today is Julie Steiner. Our next public speaker is Deb Stern.
This is my first time here doing this, and you talk really fast, and I wasn't...
You're all good.
So, but you already voted on what I'm talking about.
We did.
So, you still want me to talk?
Oh, say what you will.
Okay, here I am. My name is Deb Stern, and I live in Ward 3. I moved here in 1994 and have lived in three houses I rented and four houses I owned in seven different areas of town I've gotten around. I know that you are hearing from many people across the spectrum, and I cannot imagine how difficult it is to strike a balance between the concerns of current residents and the need to be good stewards for those in the future. So even if I don't always agree with council, I truly thank you, and I appreciate your service, and I appreciate you listening, especially in the individual meetings that you all have opened yourselves to. There's no way I could do what you guys are doing. I also recognize the need for more residents and more housing options. We are growing, so how could this not be the case? But I believe that those increased options should occur everywhere equitably in all neighborhoods, my own included. This is a big piece that is missing from this discussion. The plan's stated goal of equitable implementation, without also including equitable impact, ignores the market forces that are already being felt in the neighborhoods nearest to campus. The plan shows that new development is following the same trajectory as the original growth pattern. The near-to-campus neighborhoods have been and continue to be developed first, even without any zoning changes. They are already experiencing an inequitable impact of densification that's not seen in other neighborhoods. And if market pressures are not counterbalanced by this plan, as proposed in this resolution, this trend will continue and worsen. And Lisa, thank you for your comment about what's happening when developers are able to purchase properties close to campus. Does that mean I'm done, or I have 30 seconds?
I'm afraid your time is up.
Oh, I'm done. Well, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alec Dos.
Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today, and although I do not agree with your decision, I want to thank you for your thoughtful comments on why you made your decision. I hope that as you move forward with this process, that you will continue to look to seriously expand the availability and the ability to build new housing in all neighborhoods of our city. I was born and raised here, and I wish to make Ann Arbor my home far into the future. In my work since growing up here, I have been in other cities around the Midwest that have increased the amount and availability of housing, oftentimes in near-college campuses and college towns. Their increased availability of housing has made housing in those cities more affordable than I have observed here in Ann Arbor, and I hope that as you continue this process, that you will look to seriously increase, and without, and I wish you would have not limited the number of units and housing per parcel and simply allowed as much housing as is safe and the market will bear within the developable envelope of any parcel here in Ann Arbor. And as you move forward, I hope you will continue to look to that goal of increasing our housing. I will note that housing change takes time, and the five-year horizon, Mayor, that you identified... identified, we will unlikely to see much progress because building takes time. There are not many vacant lots in our city, and houses are not torn down lightly. People choose to stay there. And by limiting the number of units that may be built on existing lots, I fear that we have further lengthened the time that we may reduce the affordability for Ann Arbor for people like me who hope to keep calling Ann Arbor home. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nishant Keshparo.
Hi, I'm Nishant Keshparo. I live at 423 West Liberty Street on the west side. I'm disappointed in the outcome today. It's inequitable, and it follows a predictable pattern of supposedly progressive cities kneecapping housing construction of the sort that might otherwise address their housing crises. In my own neighborhood, adjacent to my home actually, is an eight-unit apartment building built in 1962, down Third Street, just another block or two, again on the west side. There are multiple small apartment buildings, often, almost all of them, I think, are built in the 60s, at least when I was clicking around the parcel map today. And that's because they used to be illegal, sorry, they used to be legal, and they became illegal, and you can't build these sorts of things today. These sorts of homes are opportunities for more neighbors to live in a wonderful neighborhood. They can be walking distance to downtown, to their work, to parks and schools. The neighbors living in these apartments, they did not have to buy detached monoplex homes, as another housing advocate here said, because these sorts of apartment buildings exist in the neighborhoods they might want to live in. For those of you who voted against DC 3, thank you. But I think that these sort of small-scale, multi-unit buildings should be permitted throughout the city without limitations on the neighborhood, without limitations on the number of units, or the neighborhood context, whether students happen to be nearby, et cetera. I think that we don't want further resolutions, further kneecapping housing, further kneecapping the comprehensive land use plan. And so, you know, I'm disappointed in this outcome. I hope we don't lose any more progress on this issue and towards addressing our housing supply crisis, and that lets us work towards addressing and permitting missing middle housing all across this town that we all love. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Shalaco.
Good evening, counsel. I just want to say that I am extremely disappointed in the fact that Resolution DC 3 was proposed, and even more disappointed that it has since passed, because I think ultimately, despite the good intentions of trying to make sure that any sort of plan passes, it ultimately caters to Ann Arbor's wealthiest and most privileged residents. And to put this feeling into context, I have a bit of a short story to share. When I was lucky enough to buy a home in Ann Arbor, everyone I told asked why in disbelief. They said, "Ann Arbor is just too expensive," or "Ann Arbor isn't as cool as it used to be." I didn't get it at first. I saw a town that offered exceptional transit and walkability, amazing things to do any day of the week, and a progressive culture that aligned with my values. And while I found that to be true, I found out pretty quickly why people don't like Ann Arbor. Turns out, there's a small but vocal and well-connected group of NIMBYs that want the city to be paused. There's a group, they're a group that loves fitting new housing harmoniously to neighborhood contexts, but what they mean is no poor people or students where I can see them. So, when folks furrowed their brows at my choice to move here, I can understand where they were coming from. In spite of all that, I found so much to love here. Ann Arbor is my home, and I want more reasons to keep it that way. It's great because all, like all great cities, it was built for and by folks from all walks of life, especially people of color, the LGBTQ+ community, immigrants, and the working class. When we cater to the wealthiest, we wind up with a city that is both culturally and financially bankrupt. And most ironically, the paused-plan crowd, by making Ann Arbor incredibly expensive to build in, they are encouraging development from their sworn nemesis, luxury student apartments. I just want you to know that the decisions that we made tonight have been noted, and I want you to think about this as 2026 and 2028 are coming up and your terms are coming due. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Stalberg.
Caller, the phone number running in 534. Mr. Stalberg, go ahead.
Good evening again, this is Tom Stalberg. Given that the items already been voted on, I'm going to change what I was going to say. I want to applaud a lot of the people who spoke up tonight with a lot of passion, a lot of personal stories, particularly the ones that didn't attack other people and make accusations of other people and lump other people into groups. But there were a lot of voices there that were genuine, passionate, and not offensive. I live in duplex zoning. I like it. My first house I bought here, when I came back to Ann Arbor, was a triplex. We still own that as a rental. I've helped other people obtain homeownership through duplexes, owner-occupied duplexes. So I'm a true believer, and I live, gentle density. But to the people out there who think that this plan is going to provide the kind of gentle density that they can actually afford, I'm sorry, you've been misled. This plan will not provide the type of housing that you'd like at a level affordable to you. You've been duped. This plan will not achieve the affordability, sustainability, and equity goals that everybody makes all these speeches about. We do need to change this plan. We are going to have a new comprehensive plan. It needs to be one that's effective. It needs to be one that works for you. I'm sorry, you don't like to hear that you've been duped. I get that, but that's the truth. We need to make changes in this plan to make direct solutions, not indirect trickle-down type of supply-side solutions. Otherwise, this plan isn't going to do anything for you. I'm sorry. Have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shannon Lau.
Hello, I'm Shannon. I'm pretty disappointed in the outcome of the resolution, and that's because I care more about welcoming people into my neighborhood and empowering them in their livelihoods than dictating and policing how their homes look. I, I'm happy that there are things in the resolution that help expedite multifamily homes and their development. I'm happy that we will reassess in coming years, and that is a large part due to the recommendations made by people here. But I am most frustrated with the suggestion of using unit-based limits to basically restrict how we can develop and restrict who gets to live near us. It means that if you're a monoplex, duplex, or triplex, you're good to go, but if you're a quadplex and you look the exact same, you're not allowed, or by the current resolution, you're required some arbitrary burden of proof that you fit the neighborhood context. It means that if there's a single-family mansion down the street, but a smaller multiplex nearby, it can't exist. It means that if I have the privilege of having a single-family house and wanting to convert it to a quadplex without even touching the exterior, I can't do that. So that's why I did not like the language of limiting by units or bedrooms. And it would have been the biggest win-win to regulate only by form, like height limits, and that would have addressed it, overshadowing of larger homes and smaller homes while also allowing for residential infill. I think altogether, we have the obligation to support those who currently live here, want to continue living here, and also including those who want to move in, like myself. Let's continue to live out our values of sustainability, affordability, and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Low.
Alex Low on Zoom. Do you have a comment?
Hi, this is Alex Low. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilmembers Gauzy Edwin and Cornell for their opposition to this resolution and for sticking to their values. To the rest of you, what in the world are you doing, making me call in while I'm sick? To Clerkmember Ackman, this doesn't set a baseline, it sets a cap. You would have dozens of people who weren't mad at you right now if it was setting a baseline, not a cap. To Councilmember Dish, you are making claims that are literally contrary to the plain language of the resolution and to the combination of this and council's previous meddling. Please don't insult our intelligence like this. Your first resolution already betrayed the principles of the comprehensive plan. This resolution does the things you promised during the discussion of the first resolution that council would never do. So now I'm looking forward to reading your words back to you tonight, I mean, your words from tonight back to you in three months when you introduce a resolution that messes with setbacks and makes triplexes unfeasible. To Mayor Taylor, you are right that pushing through an unimplementable plan accomplishes nothing.
30 seconds.
So why are you making it harder to implement? Counsel, your meddling and micromanaging is harming this comprehensive plan. Equity is not ensuring that high-demand neighborhoods get the same amount of infill or redevelopment as outlying neighborhoods. Equity is allowing people to live near where they need to go day to day. We need to build more, and you are hindering that. As Barack Obama keeps telling Democrats, I don't want to know your ideology because you can't build anything. It does not matter.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Griswold.
I'm not wearing purple tonight because we have a crisis in this country, and it's time that Ann Arbor showed some leadership. People can fill in the blank on how to do that. Some people told me the reason we have an amendment is because council wants to compromise just enough so they can get reelected. I hope that's not the reason, but we need to start working together because what I saw tonight was an even more divided community, and it's extremely troubling. I want to talk about two other things. One is the two-way cycle track. I ask for a second opinion from a licensed professional, something that we all do in the medical field. I simply ask for that regarding transportation, and what I got was misinformation, and I hate to say it, but lies. The Wash'n'Off, well, anyway, now they're called Walk-Bike Wash'n'Off. They have a statement. They do not support the two-way cycle track. No one that I've talked to supports the two-way cycle track. There is an active investigation by LARA, the licensing organization. I regret that I have to take that stand, but people are going to die, and it's time that we work together and follow fact, not ideology. Third, the positive news is we've got a problem with the public right-of-way. We've hired Jordan Roberts from Dearborn. Dearborn has an excellent ordinance regarding right-of-way sightlines, and so I'm working on something based on the Dearborn ordinance that I'll turn over to the city. Hopefully, they'll implement it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ivan Libanich. Ivan Libanich. Our next speaker is Tom Weider, Thomas Weider.
I'm going to switch gears here to a much milder subject, Proposals A and B. Unfortunately, there's a continuing pattern here of misleading the public about the effort to put a park on the library lot. This started seven years ago when you, and by the way, I should mention, there's a open letter where I'm representing those organizations. We've sent a letter, you all should have maybe gotten it in your email this evening because it just was completed. This started in 2018 when, Mr. Mayor, you spearheaded the effort to kill the proposal to put a park on the library lot by what the Michigan Court of Appeals ruled was an illegal caption, a biased caption that violated state election law, and you haven't stopped with that goal since. There's been this myth since then that the proponents of the park promised to pay for it, except that nobody can come up with what was said, when, where, and by whom, because it didn't happen, because nobody can identify it. But it's this, we all hear this all the time. We can't listen to you folks, you said you were going to pay for it. It's now been admitted by you folks that a lot of that language on the proposal, in the proposal B ballot language, is not legally binding. You held that position for a while until last week, and then you stopped, and now it's, you've made up some other phrases, legally compelling, and not the intent of, the intent of council is okay. Well, I don't have much time left, but you, we'll have a lot of, there are a lot of other things in that letter that we sent to you, and just briefly, say briefly, Mr. Mayor, you say you can't build a parking structure, can't build a parking lot on top of a parking structure. Well, you have no vision because all around this country, parks have been put on far more difficult places than a parking structure.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Henry Herskowitz. Our next speaker is David Malcolm. Our next speaker is Kitty Khan.
Kitty Khan is on Zoom. Kitty Khan, phone number 345. Press star six, I'll mute your phone. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Kitty Khan, Fifth Ward. I'm calling in to clear up some misinformation which is being spread by my council representative. She has been saying that the ballot language for Proposal A is legally binding. She said it at the League of Women Voters panel. She even insisted on next door that she consulted with the city attorney about it. Unfortunately, what Councilmember Briggs has been claiming is not true. The charter language is the only language that is law. That is a fact. I'm going to read that language now. The city is authorized to sell any of its interests in 319 South Fifth Avenue or 326 South Division Street only to the Ann Arbor District Library by resolution concurred in by at least eight members of the council. That's it. That's the only language that will be enforceable should Proposal A pass. None of the promises about what the library would do are guarantees, none of it. It's a shame Councilmember Briggs isn't here tonight to correct this information. Perhaps Mayor Taylor could correct it. Mayor Taylor, you sponsored that ballot language? Look up, Mayor, Mayor Taylor, look up. Did you write it? You're an attorney. You must know the difference between ballot language and charter language. Please clear this up once and for all now. I also want to tell people, if you've already voted and want to change your vote, you can do that before July 25th. Just go to the city clerk's office, and they will destroy your ballot-
Time.
-and give you a new one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there, oh. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? By Ira Cornell, discussion. All in favor? Oppose? Were adjourned.